Oh my gosh.
Do you have a question for me?
Not anymore.
Not anymore?
Oh wow.
Yep, time, we're on air. Here we go.
Good evening, welcome to the Rosemount City Council Regular Meeting for Tuesday, June 3rd, 2025. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, is there any additions or corrections to the agenda?
No, sir.
Seeing none, move the agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion been made on the agenda, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We have an agenda. First items up this evening are the presentations, proclamations, and acknowledgements. I'm going to take the mayor's prerogative to insert before the oath of office here for our police sergeant, a recognition for what's been termed the three amigos. If you guys could just stand forward in front so that everybody could see, these three project managers pulled off a successful...
Standing front.
Standing front. Chiefs, Public Works.
There were no changes to the agenda.
There were no changes. We just want to publicly recognize a fantastic, successful event of the Police Department, Public Works ribbon cutting and opening. We had a very nice, well-attended from city residents, and on behalf of City Council, we just wanted to give you a public affirmation for leading the charge to get that building done, and then also the actual event was very well-done with the staff, and kudos out to the rest of the staff that helped participate in that. So again, thank you very much. So with that, we'll move to the actual first item, 3A, the oath of office and police sergeant promotion. Chief Dahlstrom, please.
All right, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I should say, and I think this was, had it not been eighty-some degrees out there on Sunday, we were told to keep our speeches short, but one of the things that we, Nick and I both wanted to hit on more, and Logan too, was just that the, we couldn't have done that grand opening without the staff. It's an extra day in on their days off, and a lot of that planning in the building on our side was an testament to them. So, I can say on the police side, we had a fitness committee, but we started off with committees touring buildings. We toured five to ten different facilities. We had a fitness committee that put together that nice fitness center. We had a crime scene group that did that. We had a firearms range group that did that, and really that building is truly an accomplishment of all of us, not just the three project managers, but, so I just wanted to make sure that we acknowledge it on the front end. So, I really appreciate all of you that were there on Sunday helping out, so many different compliments from the public. I think so much social capital was built at that event. It was in my twenty-year career, that was one of the tops, so thank you for all of that. We are here tonight to celebrate a promotion of our newest sergeant, and I'm proud to be up here doing this. We've seen Kevin Tapper, born and raised in Rosemount, he's a proud graduate of Rosemount High School, and following high school, he went to, down to Florida, and actually joined the Hillsborough County Sheriff's Office in Tampa. So, at that time, I was in investigations and had the pleasure of going down to do his background when he applied to Rosemount. He had worked down in Hillsborough County for four years as a patrol officer, had several, was very successful down there, receiving an Eagle Eye Award amongst other department awards and merits. So, I remember when I flew down in 2012, I want to say it was, I didn't realize how big Hillsborough County was, and I thought I'd surprise his partners and drive across the county right after getting off a midnight flight, and was there at his precinct till the wee hours of the morning, talking to his partners. He was off-duty that night, and right away, I knew we had someone special. You're always a little bit leery that you're hiring someone from another agency or out of state, and they had nothing but positive things to say about Kevin as a teammate, and his supervisors were very sad to see him leave, but the reason made sense, he wanted to come home to Rosemount. So, I skipped a little bit of the part, immediately following Rosemount High School, he went down to Minnesota State University of Mankato, where he got a Bachelor of Science in law enforcement. So, when he came back to Rosemount, he was then on patrol for six years. Five of those years, he also served as a field training officer, and our field training officer program, you've heard me talk about that many, many times, it's, while it's not an official leadership position, it really is a leadership position that's so vital to the growth and development of our staff. We're growing so rapidly in Rosemount that we need some of our best people to be our FTOs, to make sure that we develop our newest staff the right way. So, we held patrol here for six years, and was also, then decided to join what they now coin the Detective Bureau. We've changed to a bureau ever since Deputy Chief Thomas came on board, and he successfully investigated a wider range of cases while in his role in the Bureau. Some of the cases, I reached out to Sean McMenamy, who was the sergeant at the time of investigations, and he told me about a couple of different cases that, once he started talking about it, came to light. You know, we investigate a lot of things, but one that stuck out was, we had a victim of identity theft here in Rosemount, and someone had stolen their identity and then purchased a brand-new vehicle from a large dealership, upwards of an eighty to eighty-five-thousand-dollar car, or vehicle is what I heard it was, and they were able to drive the vehicle off the lot and disappeared. So, Kevin got on the case, and after several weeks, maybe months, I'm not sure quite how long it was, it was quite a while, tracked the suspect down to Las Vegas, and started working with the Las Vegas Metro PD, and during that case, successfully identified the suspect. Rumor has it that maybe while on a personal vacation, he decided to do some surveillance while off-duty, so just showing his dedication that even when he's on vacation, he's willing to do some work. So, long story short, that individual was arrested and had a plethora of other charges from the Metro Las Vegas Police Department. He got a successful warrant signed nationally, like for national extradition, so they would bring that individual back to Minnesota if and when they got out of custody in Nevada. So, that's just one example. He's been known for his work with ICAC, Internet Crimes Against Children. They now call it CSAM, Child Sexual Abuse Material. We get some of these tips that come through, and Kevin was one of the individuals that as a detective would go after those full bore, gather the evidence needed, do search warrants, collect things properly, get confessions, that kind of stuff, and hold those people accountable. Just a couple more, because I think it just shows his overall work ethic and the type of leader that he has been, and he's going to continue to be, is when he's given an assignment, he doesn't stop until he follows through. So, Sergeant McMenamy also reported a case that involved a female who was caught attempting to cash-forged checks in Rosemount. It was apparent from the start that the involvement in identity theft and forgery crimes spread much beyond the borders of Rosemount. Many hours of sifting through financial records, evidence files, and notebooks seized from the perpetrator, Detective Tapper was able to determine they were in possession of over two-hundred-and-fifty individuals' personal information, to include names, database addresses, DL numbers, phone numbers, email addresses, employment information, and annual income. Painstakingly attempted to contact all of these people, many of which were unaware that their information was even in the possession of an identity thief. So, that case, he wrote, I want to say, a dozen very, a dozen different supplemental reports, search warrants, very well documented, and handed the case over for prosecution to the county attorney. So, we saw the, Deputy Chief Thomas mentioned this as well, but just over the last several years, you know, he's an individual that we've just seen so much professional growth leading up to his promotion in the middle of 2024. He's willing to do things outside of the norm. A lot of the supplemental positions, like, he was the president of the Patrol Unit for four years, and did an excellent job there, making it more of a liaison role versus an antagonistic-type role, easy to have conversations with, and I know that Administrator Martin reported that as well. He's been a use-of-force instructor since 2022, and firearms instructor. He was our alcohol and tobacco compliance officer during some of those times where we had repeat offenses that we had to hold accountable. He's been on the city's Wellness Committee, so he understands some of that organizational savvy and how the city functions as a whole, and it's not just the police department sometimes. So, he does a good job of outreach there. Crime scene team, rapper, street instructor. So, in his time here at Rosemount, he's earned a couple lifesaving awards, couple awards of merit, and just personally, he's one of the people that, you know, in a department our size, the sergeant role is so important, because we aren't, you know, a huge organization. We've got, call it thirty-five to forty individuals, and so that sergeant is relied upon to do a lot of different things. Pretty evident here, you can see how many people are in this room, he's very well-accepted by staff, and that's because he's a trusted leader. So, more recently, the project that you see driving around town that he helped lead was the squad design, he was the head of that committee. We're very proud of that design, along with the patch that we're wearing here today. And without further ado, I just want to congratulate Kevin on your promotion, and let's give him a round of applause. So with that, can we administer the oath of office? Thank you. Well, he's grabbing some photos here, I told him I wouldn't give this analogy, but he doesn't know what it is, so. It proves the type of family man that he is, so Kevin's a big fisherman, and we've talked fishing for many, many years, and last year, I asked him, "So, have you been out yet?" And I think you used your boat one time last year.
Not at all.
Not at all. There you go. So, he's dedicated to family and work, and someday, we hope to get him back in the boat, so. And if you'd like to go back to the PD, we're going to have cake and ice cream and water back at the new training site, so. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, guys.
Congrats.
Thank you, congratulations.
All right, that'll be completing item 3A. We'll move on to 3B, a 4H presentation. This evening, we have the opportunity of having Dylan Tate, a 4H member here in Dakota County, he'll be giving a presentation on the 4H Key Award. This Key Award is based on leadership experience, community involvement, and service to the community. The application process includes an interview, selection, and the presentations are done at the county. This is of particular interest to me, being a fourth genera, I believe I got a fifth-generation now 4H family that I'm a part of. And what's particularly nice about this, too, is Dakota County is recognized as one of, if not the largest, 4H community county in the state of Minnesota. So, being recognized like this is a big deal. This is on the same par as the Girls Scouts Gold Award, the Boy Scouts Eagle Scout Award, and near and dear to me as a former Key Award winner, 4H. So Dylan, welcome.
Absolutely, I appreciate the honor of being here tonight, everyone. But before I begin, I do want to mention that I was talking to Ms. Klimpul here, and we were talking about graduation, the overall graduation process, and I would just like to extend my extreme gratitude for all for the work you do here. You know, seeing that sergeant, you know, being sworn in tonight was almost, you know, I'm not a crying guy, but it was very moving to me, because it embodies truly what Rosemount is. Rosemount in itself is a team community, whether it be the council members up here, you know, going over the logistical hurdles. I mean, my dad and I were sitting here, talking, hearing you guys talk about, you know, the finances and all that jazz, to, you know, the individual families here. I had one of the best childhoods you can ever ask for, from one of the best men I've ever seen in my life, but my father is sitting right there, who's given me the courage, what it means to be a man today, and to the will to credit own family and bring truly honor, not only to the city, but also to this world and nation, and whether it be the men and women who out here are protecting us, making Rosemount a safe city to walk down. Truly, it's been an awesome eighteen years, going on nineteen actually, this summer, to live in this fabulous city, and I'm incredibly grateful to wear the Rosemount badge, and I intend to bring an honor in the future. But going on to my actual speech here tonight, first and foremost, again, it's an incredible honor to stand here before you all tonight as a recipient of the 4H Key Award. It is the highest distinction a 4H member can ever earn, and I'm deeply grateful for this recognition. Now, before I begin, I would like to extend my heartfelt thanks to the mayor tonight for even giving me this opportunity to speak. Being recognized by the very city that has played such a pivotal role in my life is, I can't express it, it's beyond words to, I mean, I'm trying, obviously, through speaking, but it truly is beyond words. You know, when I first got involved in 4H, it was through the Dairy Project, which is kind of the dairy showing, if you've ever seen it, it's pretty cool, honestly. I didn't grow up knowing everything about cows, I mean, that's probably, would be a good guess if you guessed, you know, the sweater vest here, probably not the biggest cow, probably not the biggest cow guy, but I mean, I learned nonetheless. But my mom and aunt, both of whom unfortunately can't make it tonight, who both had experienced, stepped in and helped me learn, they were the ones who stood next to me in the barn at five o'clock in the morning, who taught me how to clip, lead, and care for my animals with patience and pride, and while I got to walk in the show ring by myself, ultimately it was us three walking in there together. Furthermore, through these early experiences, 4H has taught me what responsibility looks like. It's not just about doing the work, but showing up for others, being accountable, and taking pride in every step of the way. That lesson followed me far beyond the bond. It gave me the confidence to take on challenges in the world of science and technology, eventually working alongside researchers from Harvard and MIT on quantum computing projects, research that has since been used and developed by the US Department of Defense. While I learned that 4H made me believe I belong in these rooms, that curiosity, commitment, and character mattered, no matter where you came from. However, 4H also taught me that leadership is about thinking beyond yourself. As president of my 4H club back in the day, I saw firsthand how powerful it is to create spaces for others to grow. That's what inspired me to found two clubs at my own high school, Speak Up for STEM, where students explore scientific communication, and Science the Mind, a club focused on neuroscience. These clubs have helped me, helped bring students to start their own journeys, just like 4H has helped start mine. Now, to me, 4H is ultimately about transformation, what's once started with a calf, and a counterfeit, and a dream, somehow turned into a career path, a sense of purpose and a passion for lifting others up. I thank my mom and my aunt for being there in the barn with me. Thank you to my club, my leaders, and this amazing program for lighting a fire in me that they didn't know was there. Because of 4H, I'm ready, not just to lead, but also to serve, and to keep thinking beyond myself. As I embark on the next four years at the University of Minnesota, go Gophers, I carry with me these values, and lessons and spirit of this program, and of the Rosemount community that has raised me since I was born. From our strong agriculture roots to our commitment to educational and civic leadership, Rosemount has always taught me that we are more than a hometown, we are ultimately a foundation of each other. I intend to bring honor to both 4H and this city, not just through my achievements, but by continuing to represent what it means to lead with integrity, curiosity, and purpose. Thank you to the mayor, the city of Rosemount, friends and family, and 4H for believing in me and for shaping the person I'm proud to be today. God bless you all, and have a good night.
Thank you, Dylan. Certainly, you've put the learn-by-doing and making your best better, certainly. Could you share what your future plans are?
Oh yeah, absolutely. You want me to go back?
Yeah, if you would. It's recorded there.
I probably should imagine that. So, I'm currently on a full-ride scholarship to the UFM, and I'm trying to become a neurosurgeon. So, lot of school, got steady hands, hopefully, you know, hopefully Alzheimer's doesn't hit me, or Parkinson's, or whatever one it is, but I'm very excited, and I know, I've been here in Rosemount for almost nineteen now, nineteen years now, and I got a lot to pay you all back for, and I intend to prove you all correct on that bargain, so that's what I intend to do. So, yeah.
Awesome. Congratulations.
I guess.
Fun fact, Dylan's persuasive skills date all the way back to kindergarten. I seem to remember one night getting a text from your mother, and you had successfully lobbied for Subway for school lunch the next day.
Yep.
And not just for yourself, but for my son, too, so it's nice to see you put your skills to good work as the years evolve, so thanks, Dylan.
Thank you all.
Mayor, if I could, would you like a photo, or would the council like a photo?
Yes, we would like a photo here with this gentleman.
It's good, it's good.
Thank you for, no, thanks for bringing it up. No, no. I was like, I don't know. It was the right shot, I froze, I froze in the moment. That's right. Too many hours yesterday.
Before completing 3B, it's just a testament to the youth that we have in our community, and I just wanted, I know we have two parents of high school graduates, how many graduated this year?
Six hundred and eighteen.
Six hundred and eighteen youths taking on the world, so I think we're going to be in good hands as we move forward with kids like this. That completes 3B, we'll move on to 3C, the Small Cities Month proclamation. Mr. Martin.
Thanks, Mayor, members of the council. A good proclamation for the council to read tonight, as June is Small Cities Month in the nation, and our partners at the National League of Cities really drive this movement each June, just to shine a light on what small cities do across the country, and as you'll see, as the council reads the proclamation, they define small cities as cities under fifty thousand, so the importance of that, that's a vast majority of cities in America, and the work that they do to bring us all a high quality of life. So, Mayor, I'll let you all read the proclamation.
All right, and with that, we will do first the proclamation, and then I believe there's a motion accepting that, so go ahead and start.
Whereas small cities and towns under fifty thousand population are the home to millions of Americans and constitute the vast majority of municipalities across the United States, and?
Whereas small cities and towns strive to strengthen their communities through the provision of services and programs to improve the quality of life for all citizens, and whereas the federal government is an essential partner in the success of small cities and towns, and must be encouraged to continue to support programs and legislation that strengthen small communities, and?
Whereas state governments are partners in the success of small cities and towns, and must be encouraged to continue to support key programs and legislation that strengthens communities, and?
Whereas organizations, businesses, and citizens are partners in the success of small cities and towns, and must be encouraged to continue to grow their efforts to make small communities a viable choice for people to live in, and whereas during these challenging economic times, the need for renewed intergovernmental partnership to support essential public services is more important than ever to ensure the safety and growth of small-town America, and?
Whereas the National League of Cities President and the Small Cities Council of the National League of Cities have declared June 2025 as Small Cities Month, now therefore, I Jeffrey D. Weisensel, Mayor of Rosemount, Minnesota, do hereby proclaim June 2025 as Small Cities Month in the city of Rosemount, and encourage organizations, businesses, and all citizens to recognize this event and to work together this month and throughout the year to invest in small cities and towns to better the lives of all citizens dated this June 3rd, 2025. With that, I'll move the motion to proclaim the June 2025 as Small Cities Month in the city of Rosemount as read. Is there a second? I have a second by Freski, roll, please.
Essler.
Aye.
Klimpul.
Aye.
Weisensel.
Aye.
Tyson.
Aye.
Freski.
Aye.
And that passes five-zero and completes 3C. Thank you. With that, we'll move on to item four, response to public comment. I understand we do not have anything this evening to respond to, and then we'll move to item five, public comment. Any individuals wishing to address the council on subjects that are not part of the meeting agenda may do so at this time. We typically do not respond to these during the meeting, but will respond in a letter, phone call, or staff follow-up over the next week or so. So, if there is someone that wishes to speak, may do so at this time, come forward, state your name and address at the podium, the floor is open. Anyone? Seeing no one making a move to the podium, we will close public comment and move on to the consent agenda. We have six, item six, we have this evening bills listing, minutes of the May 20th regular meeting minutes for council, performance measure program required by the state, the cost-share agreement with Dakota County on voting equipment, liquor license renewals for QuickTrip and Top Ten Liquors, the interfund loan for the purchase of 14515 Dodd Boulevard, formerly known as the Speedway Gas Station, and acceptance of donation of equipment for the Fire Department indicated a value of eleven thousand, two hundred dollars. Anyone wish to pull any items?
No.
For further discussion or comment? Seeing none, someone like to move item six, A through G for approval?
Some moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Tyson, second by Klimpul, roll, please.
Klimpul.
Aye.
Weisensel.
Aye.
Tyson.
Aye.
Freski.
Aye.
Essler.
Aye.
Consent agenda is approved, five-zero, and that completes item six. We'll move to item seven, public hearings, which we have none this evening, item eight, unfinished business, which we have none, and now to item nine, new business, playground proposals, Delara Park, Mr. Schultz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. I was looking back to see if Dylan was still here, to see if he wanted to help me with my presentation. Quite the speaker. Mr. Mayor and council members, as part of our long-term maintenance capital improvement plan, we have funding in the budget this year for the equipment replacement at Delara Park. That equipment was installed back in 2001, and that's about the standard life of playground equipment, you know, with average amounts of use, and wear and tear from kids playing on it, and the weather, it's being outside all the time. We put together a request for proposal and sent that out to the playground firms... Um, that equipment was installed back in two thousand and one, and that's about the standard life of playground equipment, uh, you know, with average amounts of use and wear and tear from from kids playing on it and the weather, uh, it's being outside all the time. Uh, we put together a request for proposal and sent that out to the playground firms uh in the Twin Cities metro area. Uh, we had the RFP that included the direction to the the groups as to what kind of equipment we were looking for, as far as what H categories to meet and any specific types of things we wanted to have in the projects. It also identified a cap of eighty thousand dollars for the equipment itself, and so all of the playground vendors work off that number. They then prepare a a proposal based on the RFP, and they get to propose one option for us to consider. Uh, we received six uh different uh proposals that are in your packet for you to review. Uh, we also had a neighborhood open house where we let the neighbors take a look at the proposals, and we also had those all available online. Just to kind of give you an idea, if you've never been to one of the open houses, we put proposals like this out on a reader boards, and then we let folks come in and take a look at them. So this is one of them from Landscape Structures. The one that's being recommended for approval tonight is from Little Tykes, and as you can see, um, these were just the uh the items that were identified by by a sticky note from our park commission and our youth commission as their top choice for playground equipment. Um, this is the same firm that installed playground equipment last year at Camfield Park. Uh, they did a nice job with that playground, and so we're we're happy to make that recommendation tonight. Um, like I mentioned, we also had our youth commission review the the proposals, and then we also had our Parks and National Resources Commission review the proposals, and the top uh choice uh by the groups was uh for the city to purchase uh equipment from uh Northland Recreation, Little Tykes. Um, right now, if this project moves forward tonight, we tentatively plan to remove the equipment in early September, when school's back in session. Uh, what we do is we work with, uh, there's a couple of different companies in the Twin Cities that will uh remove the equipment at no cost and then recycle it in a reuse-type situation. One of the groups is called Kids Around the World, where they'll refurbish this equipment, and then they'll send it uh to another country, uh, maybe they're a little, you know, le- less fortunate than we might be, um, and it'll be reused, um, and they've they raise funds that cover those costs, so it's not a cost to the city. The new equipment then should be installed in uh early October, so there won't be that much of a downtime, um, and plus with the kids in school, there's just less activity on the site. And so with that, um, based on the review by the the city's commissions and the input we receive from the neighborhood residents, staff is recommending that the city purchase playground equipment for Delara Park from Northland Recreation in Little Tykes. And with that, I can stand here for questions.
Floor is open for any questions in council?
Nope.
Nope.
Everybody likes it?
Yep.
Um, so with that, uh, we'd like to move the recommended motion.
I'll make a motion to purchase playground equipment for the Delara Park from Northland Recreation, Little Tykes.
Second.
I have a motion by Freski, second by Essler. Roll, please.
Weisensel.
Aye.
Tyson.
Aye.
Freski.
Aye.
Essler.
Aye.
That completes item nine, eight, with a five-zero vote in the affirmative. We'll move on to announcements from ten, city staff updates. Mr. Martin.
Uh, thanks, Mayor, members of the council. Just, I wanted to flag two things uh off the consent agenda, just because they're worthy of a call-out. First, um, really cool to get the uh the equipment donated to the fire department, and wanted to shout out Chief Springer for curating a relationship with a vendor there that was looking to offset some uh previous equipment used at at vendor shows, and it's an it's brand-new, good equipment that we can uh invest into our fire station, so really cool opportunity there, and appreciate the vendor for the donation, and Chief for for curating that relationship and making that across the finish line, and and then also the uh the interfund alone is something that folks may not fully understand what that means, but that means that the city is one step closer to being the proud owners of the former Super America uh out there on one forty-fifth, and so we did a staff walkthrough uh of the site this week, and it's looking like an abandoned gas station, which is what it's supposed to look like inside, but uh doing the the work to get ready for for demolition, uh if we were able to close on that property here in the next week, which nothing should hold us back at this point from closing um in the near term here, which is a pretty pretty exciting thing for the city, so.
Could you share a little bit of the extended schedule of where we're going to be uh with that site before Leprechaun Days?
If, assuming? If the Community Development Department can deliver, we expect, uh, I'm kidding, uh, we we expect to have it demolished in time for Leprechaun Days.
Okay.
Uh, so should have a nice, clear, half-grass, gravelly kind of site, but a a much prettier site uh for Leprechaun Days uh than it has been in the past, so um it should be a a a blight removed from the community within the within the next month and a half here.
Ready?
I think uh commu- uh Parks and Rec Director Schultz has a a follow-up here, too, Mayor.
Yes, sir, Mayor, council members, just one more item to keep in mind. Uh, next Tuesday, June tenth, Mayor, you were maybe gonna mention this, is the Patriots in the Park event, uh, five P.M. to nine P.M. This is being sponsored by uh Rosemount Yellow Ribbon. Uh, they will have food trucks, beer tent, family activities, live music, free raffle prizes, live bands on the stage, and they will have uh free food and beverage vouchers for the first nine hundred uh veterans that do attend the event. So just something we've been working with them on. I know they were here a couple weeks ago to give an update, but they asked me just to plug it one more time, um, so doing that for them.
Okay, and since you're up there, do you want to plug the first item on my list?
What's the first item?
June twelfth, Central Park.
Yes, that's another item that had, uh, we were gonna be having a open-house uh type meeting. Uh, it's actually a meeting where we're going to review the plan, concept plans for what the future of Central Park could look like. We've been working with uh some design architects to come up with some renderings of what uh the future of that park could be. We just want to get some uh public input on what people feel about those plans. Nothing set in stone at this point, it's just to gather information. Uh, we'll continue then to take that information and work with our architects to to make updates and some maybe some changes, some enhancements, and then we'll get back with the public again and move forward on that process. That's gonna be six?
Six thirty.
Six thirty, uh, two, uh, Thursday at the Rosemount Steeple Center.
There, room two hundred.
Room two hundred.
Thank you.
All right.
And so with those two, I only have to talk about our next time we're getting together. Port Authority's June seventeenth from six to seven, and the next city council meeting is on June seventeenth from seven to eight P.M. Uh, and just a little bit beyond that, City Hall will be closed for Juneteenth, celebrated on June nineteenth all day. I believe that's a Thursday. So with that, is there any other business? Oh, I know there was someone else that wanted to chat.
Oh, yeah.
Do you want to share?
We, yeah.
Either one of you, well, you have a specific one, but.
Well, we just, um, both, uh, Councilman, uh, Klimpul and I both had seniors that graduate from Rosemount High School this weekend, and uh it was a great celebration downtown Minneapolis at Mary Uche Arena, but most recently, before that, uh, they do the uh yearly walk-through, where the seniors walk through uh the middle school. Um, Logan was there, and and um my wife and I were there. Were you there?
I was at the middle school.
Oh, you were? I missed it, okay.
Yeah, I was high-fiving in the hallway.
I I just think it's one of the great, it's one of the great traditions. I was talking to Eric Hansen, who's in charge of secondary education for one-nine-six, and he said that he and um uh Principal Booty back in ten years ago implemented this, and it's one of the coolest things that I to see, to see all the seniors come through and see all the the middle schoolers just light up and kind of do high-fives, knuckles, all the different things, and the pride that the seniors um kind of displayed was really special. And one of the things that I thought was really cool, too, is that with the new middle school building out uh on the east side of town, uh, their their plan is to continue on that tradition, and so I just wanted to highlight that and say thank you to the district, thank you to all the teachers and staff for working. It was it was quite amazing.
Yeah.
Sorry, go ahead.
Like, really amazing event, and um also from commencement, it was really rewarding to see um several members of our youth commission actually walk through graduation. I I recognized some faces and names, and um the senior speaker was also Kira Favre, so she was a longtime member of our youth commission, so really proud to see her up there representing, and um just an amazing class. I think the future is bright.
Yeah.
All right. So with that, if there's no other business to come before council, I move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, let me hold that back. Uh, we are, let me take that back for a minute. Uh, I need to ask for a motion to reconvene the uh work session.
I'll move to reconvene the work session immediately following.
Your second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then the other motion that I set aside for the moment, adjournment, we are adjourned from the city council meeting. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.